The done. If you will remember Cindy Gray, who passed away in Hot Springs, Virginia. She was the daughter of the late Norris and Agnes Beard. And her service will be Saturday down there. Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for Mayor, for the President, for the members of the City Council, and for all in authority. Grant unto them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties on behalf of all thy people. We commend this nation, our armed forces, our law enforcement, our fine rescue, and thy people to their merciful care and understanding. Remember those who lie upon a bed of affliction; come with those who mourn. Hear our prayer in thy name. Amen. Legion students, flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Ricks?
Here.
Mayor Mow.
Oh, as for the approval of the minutes of the 31st meeting of Monday, April the 27th, 15, council, which pleasure?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Small.
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes. I'll now call for the approval of the minutes of the closed session that was held on Wednesday, May the 6th. I have a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes. I'll ask everyone to please return those minutes back to the clerk. What's your conclusion? A call for the report of the Mayor and City Council. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. Well, I can't stop thinking about the Main Street Festival. I want to thank all of the departments that were involved, particularly the Police Department, Mike Lotzky, and all of the other departments. I had a wonderful time, and I think it was well attended. Thank you.
Mr. Les?
Thank you, Mr. President. Monday, May 4th, we attended the 21st delegation town meeting at Post 60. There was some excellent dialogue between residents and community groups. Thank you to Senator Jim Rosa Pepp and Delegate Jocelyn Pina Melnick for holding that meeting. May, last week, I attended Bob and Barbara Moe's retirement from 36 years of volunteer service at Laurel Regional Hospital. This is an amazing contribution to the hospital and should serve as an example to all. As has been said, we had our parade in Main Street Festival on Saturday. I think this is 35th year of this event. It was enjoyed by all. Thanks to the Laurel Board of Trade, volunteers, and the men and women of the Laurel Police Department and Department of Public Works for another successful festival. I hope all the mothers had a very happy Mother's Day. Congratulations to all the city employee award recipients. Along with a big thanks to all city employees for the exceptional work that they perform. Finally, condolences to the Rex Rod Warwick family on the passing of Jackie. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Crary?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to all the employees that received awards last week. It's amazing, the hours that they put in and their heart that they put into these projects throughout the city. Also, I was saddened this morning to watch the news and see a friend of myself and Councilman Smalls on the news from Hattiesburg, Mississippi, the Mayor Johnny Dupree, who we had just met with at NLC a few months ago, discussing the very issues that have been coming up throughout the nation. And my heart goes out to the families of all people involved in Hattiesburg. That was an awful event, and I wish I could say it would stop there, and I hope that it does. Thank you.
Mr. Les?
Thank you. It's appropriate since Mayor DePietro is here. Congratulations to Brandon Pollan. He is the youngest mayor ever in the state of Maryland at age 19. And he's the mayor of Indian Head, and we look forward to meeting with him at the Maryland Municipal League Conference this summer. You've been replaced, Mr. Mayor.
And let me add to that, that he's about to be a grandfather. So congratulations on that to you and your family. With that, I would join in with the rest of council members on the things that we have done in the past two weeks. And we're very busy at this time of year, and we'll look forward to what's coming up in the next two weeks. I'd like to announce that the next Mayor and City Council meeting has been moved to May the 27th at 7:00 p.m. I think the 7:00 p.m. is 6:00 p.m., isn't it?
Not until June.
Not till June. Okay, so it's still at 7:00 p.m. But as an additional note, for June and July, and if we have to meet in August for anything, we technically take the month of August off, but the meetings will be held at 6:00 p.m. instead of 7:00. With that, I'll ask for mayoral appointments, a reappointment of Mr. Robert Kuklun to the Historic District Commission, and Cynthia Wood to the Environmental Affairs Committee. Do I have a motion?
Can you press it, please?
Sorry?
You didn't call on me, Mr. Crary.
I didn't call on you?
No, sir.
I apologize. Mr. Smalls?
I'll make this very brief. I unfortunately, because of my work schedule, haven't had the opportunity to participate in a number of events that my colleagues have, although they know that my heart is with them as they attend these many events. I did, however, have the opportunity to take in the Main Street Festival. It was something that I look forward to as well as my grandsons. I bring them down. And one I have to share with all of you, one lesson I learned on Saturday. Don't buy food from any of the vendors except Miles Meat Market. The reason I say that is because I bought three steak subs from a vendor that cost me $27. I went to the meat market. I bought a couple of hot dogs and a hamburger and drinks, and it cost me under 10. I asked my 12-year-old grandson to make sure that at future Main Street Festivals, that's the only place we start to eat. That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go back to number eight on our agenda. That's the reappointment of the mayoral nominations of Robert Kuklun to the Historic District Commission and Cynthia Woods to the Environmental Affairs Committee. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes. Thank you. With that, now we'll go to number 10.
I have a couple of words.
The what?
I have a couple of comments.
Oh, you have comments, I'm sorry.
Sit down, Robert.
Not yet. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for the, supporting the renomination of two individuals, I think, very dedicated to the city and work hard. Condolences I learned tonight, thank you, however, on Cindy Gray, the passing of Cindy Gray, and as you heard, Norris Beard's family here in the city for, and along with the Fire Department. The, let me congratulate Renee Spicer, who also had her birthday yesterday and also today, is Audie Barnes's birthday. Joyce, that must be why she's off today. I wish them happy birthday as well. To all the city employees, we had the awards banquet last week. I want to acknowledge and thank all of them. And we did do a press release. I want to thank Mike Green for getting that out, telling you about all the different things that the employees do for those awards. Lake Fest, I want to thank Mike and his staff again for putting on Lake Fest. I thought it was well attended and some good weather, so thank you, Mike. Did have the opportunity to attend the 2015 International Day Celebration at the Tabernacle Church. I want to thank Bishop Gurley for the invitation. It's always well attended and beautiful service that they do, so thank you again. On May the 9th, as you all know, we had the Main Street Festival. I want to thank all of our city departments. Want to thank the Laurel Board of Trade, our volunteer CERT members, our volunteer auxiliary members, our Police Department, Park Recs, and Public Works. Public Works did, again, an outstanding job. Some of the problems that they do run into is some of the vendors take way too much time to getting off the streets. So this year, still within about two, two and a half hours, most of the street was open, so again, I want to thank them for that. No problems, a couple, well, a couple of small problems at the Main Street Festival. And I want to acknowledge the Board of Trade, because I really do think that they've put this back into a family atmosphere. Lot more vendors this year. Sorry that Fred's grandkids told him where to go and eat, so, you know, they always pick the most expensive place. But again, just a really a good time and not a lot of issues that we had to deal with. The parking lot at the Rob J. DePietro Community Center has been repaved and relined. And again, Mike Lotzky and Department of Public Works did a lot of that in-house. I want to thank them for that. On May the 16th, coming up, Mission Barbecue will have Lunch with the Heroes event, and we encourage you to visit the Town Center and take part in that. They are inviting the general public as well. You heard Mike, Mr. Les, talk about my parents. I'm very proud of my parents, the Robert and Barbara Moe, 36 years to the Laurel Regional Hospital. I think my dad told me that's like 1,800 Friday nights that they have been at the hospital. They're retiring. We want to encourage the general public, if you have time and you want to volunteer at the hospital, it's a great place to serve. And again, congratulations to Bob and Barbara Moe. The Joint Memorial Day Service, which Reverend Litchfield is here tonight, who has been putting that on for many, many years, will be on May the 24th at the Ivy Hill Cemetery, starting at 10:30. We encourage, and it's open to the public. It's one of the only services that has police, fire, rescue, and the American Legion taking part. And, however, again, thank you for continuing to do that. The budget in the CIP is online. You can get that by going to our website, or if you would prefer a hard copy, we have those in finance as well. Mayoral appointments, and, Mr. President, I have a couple citations I need to go down in front and do. Okay? The font is a little small on this one, so we'll see if we can get this one. Mike, if you want to make your way over here. Proclamation 2015-1, whereas on May the 16th, 2015, is the Fourth Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas National Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to the nation's parks because of the decline in parks attendance over the last decade. Whereas National Park Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for the nature of outdoors. Now, therefore, I Craig and Moe, the Mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim Kids to Parks Day. And the City of Laurel encourage all citizens to participate and explore the outdoor in making time for their children and their lives and in their neighborhoods. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor.
To celebrate Kids to Parks Day on May the 16th, down at Gran Vilgoody Park at the Lake House, kids 12 and under, if they come over and check in with the Lake House staff, do a lap around the park through the pass system. We'll give them a free boat ride for the, to be used anytime during the summer. So it's good to get the kids out, encourage them to be outside. It's just a good way to encourage exercise and breathing that fresh, free air, so.
Thank you again, Mayor.
How about some of our seniors in the audience? Did they get any?
Well, now that you put me on the spot.
Now, thank you, Mike. Thanks to your committee and the continue to do excellent work in getting our kids and our families out and involved in the community as well as our parks. The next proclamation I have is proclamation 2015-4, whereas every five minutes, a woman in the, a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer. And whereas lung cancer is the number-one cancer killer of women in the U.S. And whereas lung cancer death rate in women has almost doubled over the past 37 years. And whereas advocate and increased awareness will result in more and better treatment for women with lung cancer and other lung diseases, and will ultimately save lives. And whereas Lung Force is a national movement led by the American Lung Association with the mission of making lung cancer history, uniting women to stand together with a collective strength and determination to lead the fight against lung cancer, lung cancer and for lung health. And now, therefore, I Craig and Moe, the Mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby designate the week of May the 11th through the 15th, 2015, as Women's Lung Health Week. Mike, you want to, I mean, Rich, you want to come up and get this? Ask the chief to come up, because as you're well aware, they're very involved in lung cancer and cancer in particular. And they have a card that they've done, done up, and you'll see that around town. So, Rich, you want to say anything about when your card might?
Thank you, sir. As you know, the Police Department's been very active with the Special Olympics of Maryland. We have started to spread our wings and our wealth, and we've now become involved in other groups, including the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life. As part of our promotion for Relay for Life and breast cancer awareness, we did a car. One of our marked cars has been all pinked out. It is out. It is out on the road. It was in the parade, and we utilize it for daily assignment, or duty assignments. So it is a true police car, although it does screen pink and breast cancer awareness. Part of the reason that we became so involved in the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life is a part of Mr. Beecraft and his family. I'd like to recognize Mr. Beecraft in the room. You know, again, it's another opportunity. The police are very active in a lot of different programs and a lot of different fundraising events and a lot of different charities. Cancer has touched each and every one of us somehow. So I think the more involved, the more awareness that we can promote, and the more awareness that we can allow, it's a win-win situation. Two of our, two of our three last, I'm sorry, two of our three deceased retirees died of cancer-related illnesses. So it has touched us directly, and it continues to touch us as a city, as a nation, as the world. So, thank you. Thank you. I accept this on behalf of the organization.
Thank you, Chief. Last one I have is proclamation 2015-8, whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an economic, environmentally sound, and efficient means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness. And whereas commuter connections and the Washington Area Bicycle Association invite you to join area commuters for a celebration of bicycling on Friday, May the 15th, 2015. How many are biking to work on Friday? No hands? I'm going to proclaim it, so let's see how many of you do it afterwards. And whereas the bicycle is in roadways and therefore is entitled to legal and is responsible for all public roadways, facilities, except where prohibited by law. And whereas it is not, it is not how far you ride, or whether you ride the whole way or just some of your commute, bike to work is, bike to work is about getting on your bicycle to commute all or part of your ride to work. And whereas there is a, there are designated bike lanes throughout the City of Laurel, which promotes all road users to share the road safely. Now, therefore, I Craig and Moe, the Mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim that the City of Laurel, May the 15th, has Bike to Work Day. Mike, why don't you come on up and get this on behalf of the city employees? Green, Mike's our Human Resource Officer. Actually, we, a few years ago, actually, one of our employees was biking to work and was hit by a car. So on Friday, like every day, we encourage you to be safe and watch for bikers that are out there. Make sure they have their hat and their proper gear on. So, Mike? Okay, thank you all.
This is item number 10. This is a reintroduction of the second public hearing. No, I'm, I've got to go to number nine. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm out of sorts tonight. Apologize. This is a general public hearing, where we allow anybody to speak on any topic whatsoever in the City of Laurel. Is anyone caring to speak during the general public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close that general public hearing at 7:20. Item number 10 is reintroduction and second public hearing on ordinance number 1837, map amendment number 847, in ordinance to approve map amendment application 847, for rezoning of the property known as Sandy Spring Village, located at 312 Sandy Spring Road in Laurel, Maryland. Consisting of 1.44 acres identified as the Laurel subdivision Block 3, Lot 20, tax parcel number 1033588, owned by Ross Phyllis and Calvin Grau, located on the south side of Sandy Spring Road between Philip Powers Drive and Montgomery Street. From the R18 medium-density multifamily R20, one-family, single, semi-detached, two-family detached, and one-family triple attached. I've read the title into the record for reintroduction. This will be the, there will, this will be the third public hearing going to the Planning Commission on Tuesday, May the 12th. I'll open that public hearing at 7:22. Mr. Namet?
Yes. Legends Builders filed an application to rezone the property in order to keep the existing single-family house on the property and construct five duplexes. Each half of the duplex will be on its own single lot of record for ownership. Agency notifications were mailed out, and the only response that we had was water and sewer, a WSSC water and sewer. Commission stated that there will be a negligible effect on the water. There may be a downstream effect on the sewer. However, that will be reviewed again during the site plan phase. This is coming back before you, because the certified letters were not mailed out. And so certified letters have been mailed out, and I have copies of that here tonight. There's also been two rounds of public notices published in the newspaper, and the public notice sign has been installed. The staff will be recommending tomorrow night for the Planning Commission to recommend to the Mayor and City Council, recommendation to rezone the entire lot to an R20, single-family attached zoning designation. There has been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood where the property is located. The property adjacent to the eastern boundary consists of multifamily apartments that are in the process of being demolished and reconstructed. Properties to the north and west are either single-family detached or two-family semi-attached, and to the south are townhouses. The rezoning of the subject property from R18, medium-density multifamily to R20, one-family semi-detached, two-family detached, and one-family triple attached, will permit the development of two-family semi-attached owner-occupied residential units. The existing single-family detached residential unit is a permitted use in the R20 zoning district. To rezone the existing residential unit to R55, single-family detached, will create a spot zone, which is required as spot zoning makes unjustified exceptions for a parcel or parcels within the district. To conclude, Legends Builders President Michael Collins is here, if you have any further questions. And I do have a clarification question. It says a second public hearing. This will be going to the Planning Commission tomorrow night, and I believe it'll be coming back at the end of the month, and so.
Yeah, I made a mistake. I was going to correct that on the record. I thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, this is the second public hearing. There will be a third public hearing on May the 27th here in council chambers.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this topic? Seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing at 7:24. This is item number 11. This is introduction to first public hearing on number, on ordinance number 1847, map amendment number 850, in ordinance to approve map amendment application number 850 for rezoning of property located at 518 A Montgomery Street, Laurel, Maryland, consisting of 4,650 square foot, identified as Laurel Park subdivision, Block 26, Lot 9, tax parcel 00993394, owned by Franklin, I'll spell the last name, D.J.I.S.A.M., located 125 foot east of Sixth Street on the south side of Montgomery Street, from a CN commercial neighborhood zone to R55 one-family detached zone, providing an effective date. I've read this into the record for the first reading, and I'll open the public hearing at 7:26. Namet?
The property owners request that he downzone his property from commercial neighborhood to a R55 single-family zone in order to bring his house, single-family house, into conformance with the zoning. The zoning districts to the north, east, and south are R55 one-family, single-family detached zone. And the reason why, the history on this property is, this used to be a parking lot that served the cleaners at southeast corner of Sixth and Montgomery. How, two houses were constructed where the parking lot is, and he owns one of the houses that was constructed. Tomorrow night, the planning staff will be recommending to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission recommend to the Mayor and Council to recommend the rezoning, approve the rezoning to R55 for the following rationale. There has been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood where the property is located. The property at 518 A Montgomery Street used to be a parking lot, Zone CN, commercial neighborhood district. In 2003, a single-family detached house was constructed on the property. The property owner seeks to rezone the house into conformance with the zone. And I would also like to add that this will be an extension of the single-family zoning on the northeast and south. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brock, you want to add anything?
Just a correction, Mr. President. The tax parcel should be 0993394. That is all.
Okay, for the record, that's corrected.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anything else from you, Robert?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this topic? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:28. And this will go, as you heard, on before the Planning Commission tomorrow night. We will take it up at our next meeting on Wednesday, May the 27th, at 7:00 p.m. Item number 12, introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1848, in ordinance to approve the revitalization overlay area number one, conceptual site plan for the Laurel Shopping Center development with the conditions and provisions at effective date. Read this into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:28.
Good evening. The applicant, Federal Road T, is seeking concept overlay approval for application, revitalization overlay application, R1-1, 2015, place the subject property into the R1 city center zone. The applicant is proposing to demolish 52,000 square feet of vacant commercial space to build a four-story apartment complex with up to 180 dwelling units and 100 parking spaces. Also, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing landscape island within Montrose Avenue to allow vehicle connectivity to occur along Montrose Avenue between US Route 1 and Fourth Street. I spoke with the applicant's attorney regarding the concerns you guys had at work session, and he is here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. One of the concerns that wasn't expressed at the meeting after reviewing the... One of the concerns that wasn't expressed at the meeting after reviewing the, the traffic study, impact study that was done, it appeared that there was several parts missing from that traffic impact study in that this study contradicted the earlier study. It's hard for me to believe that between 5:00 and 6:00 each day, that's the only busy hour. Therefore, I've spoken to staff and also to the council members that will need to look into that at the appropriate time.
Mr. President, my question, is one dependent on the other? It appears to be there's two issues here. First of all, is the opening of the street. And the second one is the erection of the porch. Are they dependent on each other? Could they be, could they be separated? I guess I raised the issue last time about the island.
Right.
They happen to be on the planning commission, put the island in place.
Well, I do know that part of their overlay application, they were proposing to do the apartment complex and the removal of the landscape island was also part of it. I'm not sure if that is one is depending on the other, but I do know they have an overall plan of several things that they're trying to accomplish.
Well, in that case, maybe I'll be looking at the whole plan at once. I'll just suggest that, I find it hard to put together, opening that street up with the apartment. That's just my, just looking at it, trying to understand what has to be done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Wanna...
Yeah, Mr. Gibbs, their attorney is here to...
Would you identify yourself for the records or your address?
I will. Good evening. Council, Council President Ricks, Mayor Moe, members of the councils, pleasure to be here again. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo, and I represent Federal Realty Investment Trust. Mr. Brian Donnelly from Federal is here this evening, as is Mr. Mike Lenhart, our traffic consultant, and behind him, Matt Jones, our civil engineer from Bowler Engineering. Let me try to, if I could, put some context on everything. We, we filed this, our revitalization overlay application, and it is for, it is for an overall phased redevelopment. We have, we have 52,000 square feet of vacant space in the center today. It's back where the bowling alley and the fitness, excuse me, the theater and the fitness facility was, and it, we have not been able to lease it. So we want to raise that 52,000 square feet, and we have an immediate user who would like to come in and develop a maximum of 180 multifamily units in that area. Now, this is one entire RO application, but again, two phases. So if we receive your approval, the first phase would involve the 180 multifamily units. That section would come in for final site plan approval on its own. Not, there wouldn't be a final site plan approval filed for the entirety of the project at one time. And then, the balance of the project would come in on phase two based upon market demand, because what we're also asking for is the authority, we're gonna lose that 52,000 square feet, and we'd like to have the opportunity to maybe add back 50,000 square feet elsewhere in the center. We have space out by the Route One frontage, and as Montrose runs back to Fourth Street. Now, our proposal to remove the island from Montrose, open that and establish vehicular connectivity between Route One and Fourth Street is really part of an overarching series of improvements that would occur at that intersection. We have met with the State Highway Administration. Mr. Lenhart has prepared a study which State Highway has reviewed and has given preliminary approval to. And so, the, the, the island would not be removed unless we obtain a State Highway Administration access permit to change the access at Montrose from its single left turn to a double left turn, traffic signal-controlled intersection, and then remove that teardrop turnaround, that very awkward movement where you go continually north on Route One, circle back around on the teardrop, and try to weave back over to get into Armstrong, or, that's a pretty, pretty difficult movement there, but to get into Montrose, to get into the center. We would remove that. That is a very expensive infrastructure improvement, and we have had preliminary conversations with the city. We have, we have not been told it would be approved, but we have had preliminary conversations with the city with regard to our request for a tax increment financing, a TIF, to assist in that public infrastructure improvement. Only if all of that occurred would the island be removed. Only if all of that occurred would the island be removed. So that's, that's, that's a process that would play itself out and, and which we would go through as we move forward. But the final site plan on the multifamily would, you know, hopefully, if you see fit, would move forward immediately. That's, you know, that's pretty much where we sit right now. I, I wanna emphasize that the multifamily units are gonna be accessed off of Marshall. So it's not like they're gonna be feeding traffic into the center or that...
Which you own.
Pardon me?
Which you all own.
Yes, sir. That is absolutely...
It's not a city street.
That is absolutely correct. That is absolutely correct. So, I mean, that's what we have there. I, I'm not sure, Councilwoman McCrery, about your comment about the peak hour, 5:00 to 6:00. Was that with the parking study or with the traffic impact study?
Traffic.
Okay. I can, I can only say, and I'll be happy to bring Mr. Lenhart up here, but I can only tell you that, you know, he is highly respected transportation engineer formerly with the State Highway Administration. And, you know, I've never encountered a situation where we weren't able to reconcile his findings with those of, of transportation staff in whatever jurisdiction we're working. So I'll be happy to have him answer your question, or if you wish, at later date, he can get with city staff and see if we can resolve it. He also did do a parking demand study, because part of our application requests that we be allowed to provide fewer than the required number of spaces if you totaled up the, the number of spaces based on normal counting standards in the ordinance. And, you know, we come up a little bit short. We, we have 17, 1,718 spaces out there now. The multifamily will have 100 spaces beneath the building because it will be constructed on a podium, so 1,818 spaces. And under the code provision, I believe we're around a requirement for something like 2,600 spaces. So what we had Mr. Lenhart do was go out on a Friday, November 14th, and a Saturday, November 15th, when, you know, traffic shoppers are, it's pretty getting into the peak season of Christmas, but not quite there. And he did counts every 30 minutes of all the spaces that are in the center, and where, where, you know, on Friday, I think the max utilization was 700 and some spaces, and on Saturday, 800 and some spaces. So we have more than enough parking spaces to have a surplus with the 100, with the 1,818. So we, you know, we, we have reviewed the staff report, we concur with the staff's conditions. We'll be happy to do any work you feel that we need to do before we come back to you for a final hearing. And I'd like to express my appreciation to Ms. Bulleye and Mr. Brock for all their efforts and their willingness to meet with us and try to, you know, try to get this thing in a situation where we're at one with one another. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to, if, if you will, take Mr. Gibbs up on having Mr. Lenhart come up, and at least for the record address, Councilwoman Creris, uh, Creris, question regarding this study.
Hi, good evening. Could you just restate the question exactly, so I can...
Could you put your name and address into the record, please?
Yes, Michael Lenhart, 331 Redwood Grove, Port Villageville, Maryland.
Thank you, sir.
One of my concerns was the traffic impact study sites in the papers before me, that there was only one busy hour at the entrance to the mall, if you will, which is Fourth and Montrose. Also, what's going to occur at Marshall and Montrose? That contradicts earlier reports of that. We've had to look at that intersection for years in addition to BRAC studies, because if accidents happen on 198, that's gonna be your drop-off. So I just found, found it hard to believe, I don't know if you wrote it or someone else wrote it, that there's one hour a day that that intersection is busy.
Well, I prepared the report. I wrote it, and so if, if, maybe we talk about the terminology, not necessarily one hour a day that the intersection's busy, but I believe what you're referring to is a signal warrant analysis. When we do a signal warrant analysis, we look at the traffic volumes on the main line, in this case, Fourth, and then we also look at the traffic volumes on the minor street, Montrose. We do, we did a 13-hour traffic count, and we are required to follow the manual for uniform traffic control devices, which is the same guidelines that the city follows when you do your signal warrant analysis. And there are formulas, there's certain requirements for traffic volumes on the main line and on the minor street, and we do our counts, we compare it to those formulas, and the, you know, the information is what it is, and...
And that's what I'm saying, that information contradicts earlier studies. So therefore, I think it needs to be relooked at in some way or fashion, and also Montrose and Marshall. I'm not saying we can't work through this, but I found that hard to believe.
Well, traffic can fluctuate from day to day.
Apparently, a lot.
We did our account, our, our signal warrant analysis, those counts were done in January. It depends on when the counts were done...
Right.
...by the city. So the volumes could fluctuate, and, you know, they're, they're not gonna be the same from day to day, so that, that could describe why there was discrepancy.
Yeah, there's a big discrepancy, and that's why I bring it up, okay?
And if I, if I might... Councilmember Creris, the, the one thing I would say is that I think everyone agrees, including your public works folks who we met with a couple weeks ago, that the signal at Montrose and Fourth really only becomes necessary if the island is removed and the connectivity is established. And so if that occurs, we willingly accept the condition regardless of what our traffic study said.
And I'm saying whether the island's removed or not, I think that, that needs to be looked at again. And I've spoken to staff, you can work it out with them.
I understand, so you want, you want it to be looked at...
Probably independently.
Just because you think there's a, there's a concern relative, not for the heck, but because there's a concern relative to disparity in the two finances.
Yeah, that's an awful busy intersection. I don't know what was occurring on those days in January, but...
That's fine.
Okay.
We, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do.
Thank you.
Get the information back.
Great.
Mr. Les, anything else?
It's good to see you back here.
Good to be back, thank you.
Anyone else?
It's only been a few years.
Yeah.
I haven't been on the planning commission for 19 years, so...
Actually, it's been, it's been less than that, Doug.
Yeah, well, you may have been back here, but you have, we haven't had a chance to talk. Let me just say this. I think the previous study that I could find, and I don't have them all, was done by, I think, Traffic Group, Mr. DePietro, does that sound right? Probably. Okay? It contradicts some of what is said in this study, as Donna says. Now, let me just say this. The island was put there to stop the traffic from, from creating a speedway up Montrose. And we've tried everything on Montrose. We put a circle in up there, and we've still got problems beyond Fourth Street. So I think that's something that really needs to pay attention to. In January, the car wash wasn't operating. When the car wash is operating after a bad weather or a rainy week, you can't get off Route One into the place. And you're taking up, I don't know, 60, 70, 80 parking spaces right to the right when you come off of Route One. There is a real problem right there on that corner, as you probably already know. You've got the gas station, if the gas price, if there is low, they're backed up, but the car wash is a real problem. I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, I'm just saying, they can't stack enough cars there, and what happens is they stop the cars from entering into their parking area on Montrose, and then they back out onto Route One. So you've got cars hanging out on Route One. So again, I think that you need to pay, pay real careful attention to what's going on there. Maybe part of the plan you have is to get rid of the car wash, I don't know. I mean, that's up, that's up to first, that's up to the, to the owner. But it is a problem, I think, for the efficient operation of the shopping center, and it's gotten even worse since they opened up the exercise facility there. There's a lot of people going in and out of that exercise facility. I've noticed it when I've been there to get my car washed. So again, I think Ms., Councilwoman Creris points out a legitimate concern about opening up the island and the impact that's gonna have. And as you said, the Route One, changing the Route One structure, gonna be a very, very expensive operation. Come on Saturday mornings or Friday evenings, we can see what happens there, especially if there's a lot of people going in the car wash. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else from the council? Mayor Moe?
Ms. Gibbs, thank you all, and thank the applicant for being here. As you know, we've met several times. I do wanna state, as I did during the work session, I asked the applicant to take a good look at the entire layout of the shopping center. So one of our oldest shopping centers in town, we wanna see it survive and thrive. We want it to complement the new town center, and I've asked for an overall plan, and I think you're heading in that direction, but you can hear what the council's saying as well. There are gonna be some traffic issues there at Fourth and Montrose. As you heard, there's gonna be some traffic issues at Green Hill and, and Fourth Street, you know, overall, because of what's going, taking place there. The shopping center, the town center itself, with the movie theater and all that's going on there, there is a lot of foot traffic, there's a lot of traffic, car traffic and other. But I, I wanna make sure everybody understands, I'm not gonna let S.H.A. dictate us what we're gonna put in that center. So if the council or the commission comes back and wants certain things done in that, then we need to work with S.H.A. to do that. I, I understand what you all wanna do, but I'm, I think we can open up that center section to make it more user-friendly, walkable, rideable, some, some pad sites there. That's why I suggested we take a good look at all that. I don't want that to be lost in this. And I did state that to the council, that that's why you all looked at that on my behalf, because I think the center has a lot of potential, and I think the things that you're doing there now, the paint, the cleaning up of the stores, all of the new things that you're doing there, I think we appreciate, and I think there's still other things to be done. But I always wanna make sure everybody understands that. I, I want us to look at all of this, we're willing to work with you all, especially if you're talking about a TIF and other things, there's gonna be some things that we're gonna demand to make sure that the city and the residents and the businesses are protected overall. So again, I wanted to make sure everybody understood. I was the one that asked us to take a look at that entire opening of the center, the bank building itself, there are some security issues, there's a lot of things that, that go on in that centerpiece there, that center core, and I think there's some things that can, in my view, really enhance that center. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:48, and we'll move on to the next item. And like I said, we'll have the second public hearing on Wednesday, May the 27th, and get the report back from the planning commission. Item number 13 is hearing, and hearing on the intention to raise the tax rate above the constant yield tax rate, the CYTR seller.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Moe. The, each year, the State of Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation provides to the city the assessable base that we use to calculate our real estate tax revenue. Within that package, they provide the constant yield tax rate, which is the tax rate the city would levy in order to generate the exact same amount of tax revenue in FY16 as we do in FY15. This year, the state has determined that our constant yield tax rate should be, or is, 69.89 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The FY 2016 proposed budget... The FY 2016 proposed budget provides for 71 cent tax rate. This exceeds the constant yield tax rate, which requires that we place a very specific ad in a newspaper of record, which we did on April 30th in the Prince George's Sentinel. That ad was submitted to the state today as required. The city's tax rate, including FY16, will be 71 cents per $100 of assessed value since fiscal year 2009. And we're required to have a hearing that we are exceeding the constant yield tax rate, but we are not increasing our current rate of 71 cents.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Sailor. Open the public hearing at 7:50. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this topic? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:50 and a half. It's a pleasure to the council.
That's all you got to do.
That's all I have to do.
You got to hold a public hearing.
Okay. All right, item number 14, introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number 1849, an ordinance adopting the operating budget of the mayor's city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year of July the 1st of 2015 through June the 30th of 2016, and to levy property taxes and to authorize the collection of such taxes, and approving the capital improvements program for the fiscal year 2016 to 2021. Ms. Sailor?
As required by the city charter, the balanced budget was presented to the city council by the mayor before May 1st. This budget is $28,748,566 in the operating side. The tax rate proposed is 71 cents per $100 of assessed value, a personal property tax rate of $1.69 per $100 of assessed value, and a transit overlay tax of 3 cents per $100 of assessed value. Capital improvement program provides funding for $2,863,165 in city-funded projects of fleet acquisitions, street projects, park improvement projects, facility projects, and information technology, and public safety.
Thank you, Ms. Sailor. Read the, read the title and the ordinance into the record for the first hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 7:52. Is anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close that seven, public hearing at 7:52 and a half, and we'll have the second public hearing with possible action with the mayor and city council meeting on Wednesday, May the 27th at 7:00 PM, thereabouts. Is there anything else to come before the council? Thank you, everyone, for their patience. We are adjourned.